Yeah.
It's a... We'll have the action here. Six o'clock, uh, being present will call this meeting to order. Um, welcome guest, uh, we'll have you guys introduce yourselves, uh, when you're up. Um, you have the, uh, consent agenda there in front of you. Um, any changes to that?
No changes, just a, uh, clarification on personnel. Royce Bishop will be a certified LPC. That's a part of the stronger grant, the stronger connections grant that we received. So, we'll have that for the remainder of this year and next year. It's a two-year grant, um, for an additional counselor for the, uh, social emotional side of things. So, that's a position that we're fortunate to have, but, um, won't be able to have after next year. And that's all I got.
So, it's a two-year?
It's a two-year. Well, remainder of this year and next year.
Right. Any questions concerning any of the, uh, consent agenda items? An emotion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So long.
Second.
Motion to make in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Alright, then we'll move on to administrative reports, but we're gonna upend things here and start with Colton.
It's different being first.
Bring some energy.
Oh, bring some energy. Alright, so, we've been talking about it all before this being started, so we'll go ahead and open up. For sports news, volleyball, like we said, has been absolutely kicking butt. They just won the licking tournament, won all six games, six to zero. And our statistics, they were undefeated at home, not a single even set was lost at home. So, they went out, they worked hard, and like we said, when they get together and really come together as a team, they can absolutely be unstoppable. So, great to see our volleyball program doing good. And tennis just came back from their district tournament, Brianna and Sheridan, their double. They placed third at the district tournament, and Lilian Wymer placed second. So, our sports seem to be doing really well. Fall sports are kinda starting to come to a close, so we're reaching that tournament season where things are trying to really, finally trying to come back together. But, all in all, some really good results, hopefully some good things ahead of us. So, first in clubs, lot of clubs are active, lot of new things coming, a lot of stuff is happening, looking really good. So, the biggest thing, we're gonna start with FBLA, and FBLA is bringing back a very old tradition, which is the Fall Film Festival. So, that is just simply, not that old. Old for me, it wasn't when I was in high school. So, basically, you get your group, you guys can make a fall film, it's gonna be a short horror film or a music video, and we have decided that we're going to come together on October 31st, I believe, and we're all going to view these together. You can wear your PJs, they're gonna give us popcorn, and we're gonna view all of these creations that us students have put together, and it should just be a really good time.
And I, I believe the board would be welcome to, to put in a video.
Absolutely. I mean, the videos online, you can see all the rules and requirements. There are prizes too, I hear the prizes are pretty good. So, there's all sorts of categories you can win in, so it should be really fun, and it is very open, and we hopefully will see a lot of creativity, a lot of good videos. And then, FBLA is also preparing for the Trump or Treat fundraiser, which they do every year. Already getting our costumes planned out, they should be pretty good, so we hope to see you guys there as well. Now, moving on to FFA, FFA just got back from a couple of events. FFA on Saturday, we went to cattle working, which is probably the most FFA thing you will hear, which is where we go in there, they give us, they run three cows in there, they judge you on how well you give your shots, how accurate they are, how fast you can do it, and overall how safe you are doing all of it. So, it's a great opportunity, especially for people who've never worked a cow in their life. It's just something really essential, especially if you're going to the agricultural field, just something that's basic, and I really think it's just a great opportunity. Lot of people may not even like touching a cow, or have never given a shot, and so it was really nice to see them go up there and kinda step out of their comfort zone. Tomorrow, we have another big event, which is the Area Aggie Olympics. That's an event where all of your schools will come together and compete and do another very aggie thing, just see who has the best skills overall, whether it be nail driving, throwing a hay bale, haltering a goat, firearm range with a BB gun, all sorts of it. It's a super fun event where all of us get to come together and just have a good time. And then, one of our biggest events of the year in a couple of weeks is National Convention. That's an event where there will be over maybe a hundred thousand FFA members this year. FFA, I may not have given this stat, but over the summer, FFA, National FFA reached a status of over one million members throughout the organization, which was the first time ever. So, there's gonna be a lot of people at that convention this year, and it should be an incredible time. And we did happen to get the tickets to the Megan Maroni concert, so that will also be a really good time. And then, finally, we worked the Bear City Festival, as well as most of the clubs. And if you went to the Bear City Festival, you saw it was a great time, you could see just about every single club there. And so, awesome thing to see them in our community, love to see it. And finally, SCCLA, right now as we speak, they are at their Fall Leadership Conference, which is basically, from what I understand, almost like their state leadership conference. They're up at Osage Beach right now with all sorts of SCCLA members around the state, and just having a good time. So, moving on to the school news, I'm gonna give the report for some activities going on in the middle school, and when Dr. Johnson told me this, I was so happy to hear it. So, the student leaders have been putting together nights for sports, basically like we do with the pep club, the middle school has started their own thing just for that. And so, on the 23rd, they had a neon night for the volleyball team, and then on the 26th, they had a pink out for the football team. And so, that just forms my heart, seeing that the middle schoolers wanna support their fellow classmates, just like we do in high school, and really preparing them to just have such a community, especially at this school level. And then, West Plains Bank, we had our check presentation, which is something that we loved to see, and we also had the fire safety presentation for the fifth graders, as well as the elementary school. I remember being in elementary, that was a day that all of us looked forward to, was getting the firefighters to come through, and getting all sorts of goodies and learning all about that. So, thank you to the city of Willow Springs, 11 Point, and even some, um, department officers from Pomona came through. So, great time for them, learned a lot about the science of fire and how to put out a fire, so from what I heard, really good time for that. And, like I said, middle school sports are coming to an end, and we are finally getting into the process of winter sports to come through, so that should be really fun. And I know elementary has had a lot going on, they as well have the fire day. And then, school-wide, fall break just around the corner, that will be next week, I believe, the 23rd to the 25th. The 23rd will be a half-day, that is because we have student-led conferences, which are on the 23rd, and first quarter comes to an end this Friday, so the school year is flying right by. Hard to believe that we're already through the first quarter. And then, now, what we always wait for, comments and concerns in the district. So, real quick, I wanna reiterate that I have been chosen up here to represent the students, what's on their mind, and I know that they elected me to represent them, and I'm here to be their voice, so I'm going to be their voice, even if it seems controversial. I wanna answer any questions they have, and any questions you have, and I wanna state what they are upset about. So, number one, I know this has been a discussion, which is the Wednesday situation, I've heard that we are maybe talking things out, but I have seen that Somersville, I believe, has gone to no Wednesday events at all, so I do need to do my research a bit there, but a lot of students, as well as myself, are a little frustrated that events just get pushed off to Wednesday immediately, when a lot of the students have other plans, especially wanting to go attend our youth group at that night, or have other plans otherwise. And so, it's a big situation, I know a lot of us are thinking about it, and hopefully we can do something about it. And then, as well, like we've talked about, many of the girls feel like their sports, or even their stuff alone, aren't really getting the recognition that they deserve. However, I believe that is kinda starting to change with volleyball, we've seen volleyball doing really well, but a lot of them just don't feel as heard. And speaking of people not feeling heard, a lot of students feel like just that the school doesn't seem to care about their mental health, and they just feel left out and empty, and it's just really heartbreaking for me to hear, even though they know people can reach out. There's just some sort of aspect where these students are not feeling heard at all. And then, this is another one, which you guys will probably roll your eyes, but they also feel like taking away phones hasn't done much. Now, they have really kinda spoken their voice, and it may seem crazy to them, but like I've spoken before, it's an absolute revolution with technology, and they feel like something can be done, even if they just have them in the hallways or at lunch. It's just something about the separation and not having them is just not good, and all of it is just seems to come together and make this one big mess, but hopefully we can figure that out, and I'm open to any questions about any of this.
Go for it.
Go for it.
Um, do you think the mental health, um, you know, in our neighboring town, Mountain Grove, we had a girl commit suicide, is that part of, do you think, something we need to address in our school?
I'm not sure, so I believe it has had a bit of a toll, coming from other Mountain Grove people, I know it has had a huge toll, they've not gone to any FFA events, which they were not cattle working, and they weren't at any other events that we've had recently, which I completely understand, that's just an event that is something hard to deal with, and I know from the Willow Springs district, we've dealt with that as well, it's been something to struggle with, not while I was in high school, but other students as well. So, there could be a potential fear factor in that, just knowing that it's just an environment that is so hard to deal with. And so, that may have an effect, especially now, worrying about other classmates. I know, thankfully, our classmates do care about each other, I've expressed that in here as well, we've seen that students always wanna come together and support each other, and even from personal experience, students always reach out to me, I always reach out to other students. So, there really combines there, which, again, I'm not exactly entirely sure why they feel that way, and I feel like that may be something that needs to be addressed, but knowing, I personally feel like them knowing that someone could be there to help would be something nice to address, because even asking about this, I've mentioned that, um, this was really heartbreaking to hear, but I told them, like, we have people like Mrs. Seiler, and one girl even said, "Who's Mrs. Seiler?" And so, it was heartbreaking to hear about that, and so maybe they aren't feeling as heard, so something could be addressed potentially.
You mentioned the Wednesday night, are we, are we seeing that happening again? What's?
So, I talked about it last year, of course, I was unable to even attend a meeting one time, and, like I said, it's just an issue where it feels like, I'll just speak my mind on the tennis situation, a tennis game match, I guess, was rescheduled to a Wednesday night, I felt like, I don't know if that was the best option, because we see the tennis girls always having events on Saturdays, they go to tournaments on Saturdays, even if, I can understand if it is like district tournaments, or even if there was a situation where Wednesday is the absolute only day we can do, maybe we can do that. But it just feels like, from my perspective and other students' perspective as well, when there's something, we just decide to throw it on Wednesday and not even think about it, put any other consideration into it.
I will say, Colton, on the tennis situation, that was the two coaches that decided that, and I'm really proud of the situation, the girls came and expressed their concern, and they were able to move that match earlier in the day, so that they could have the match and attend church.
I agree.
We still maintain that we try to avoid Wednesdays as much as we possibly can.
That was a makeup also.
That was a makeup also, but, yeah, I mean, we try to avoid Wednesdays, and I applaud your, your, your principles and your beliefs, obviously, but, um, we do continue to try to avoid Wednesday nights.
I understand, and I know we try very hard, and so I'm very thankful for that, and I'm thankful for the students that took a stand, but I also feel like something else could have been done, potentially.
Thank you.
What, um, what time's the FFA Romeo tomorrow?
The Aggie Olympics?
Aggie Olympics.
I believe it is 4:30, I will have to double check.
Okay.
But you're more than welcome to attend, it's also, it's a really fun event, so you guys are more than welcome to watch.
I'm curious on, uh, being heard and not being heard.
Yes, sir.
What does that look like? I mean, how, how are they not being heard versus what would it look like for them being heard? I mean, we have a student representative here, you know, putting that out there, so what would the changes be, or what would the expectations be to be heard more? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Somewhat. So, the way I see it is, it could just be a student-to-student thing, where some students just don't have the connections with other students like some people do. I'm very grateful for my friends, and I know that they're always there for me, and my friends will always reach out to me, but some people may not have that sense of connection, some people just may not make friends as well, or maybe someone just hasn't reached out to someone that's new. And again, there also may just not be a teacher relationship, where some students don't feel as comfortable with their teacher somehow, and some students do feel really comfortable with their teacher, and they've made friends with their teacher, and their teachers have helped them out really a lot. So, I could ask around, and I could easily get a clear answer on why they feel that way, and what being heard would look like, but as of right now, I personally just think it's just a friend-to-friend internal issue.
So, to piggyback that a little bit, do you feel like, 'cause you kinda mentioned the student-teacher relationship, and maybe you explained it a little bit, but it's maybe more that dynamic than it is a student who didn't know who Miss Seiler is?
Possibly.
Or do you think it's both, or one way or the other?
I personally think it's just a big congestion of just everything we've discussed combined. For one student, it may be that, for one student, it may just be not being able to make friends, another student, it may just not be a teacher thing, so, all in all, there's just multiple things that it could possibly be, and I can come back to you guys and get a clear concise answer, maybe dig deeper with some students if that, if you would like that.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, 'cause we want two things.
Yes, we may need to communicate that better, I mean, we just hired someone tonight that's another counselor and another resource for students. So, we do have that available, and we may need to do a better job of communicating that availability to students. Glad you brought that up.
How do kids feel about the advisory process now?
So, a lot of students, now that we're getting advisory kind of rolling, I shouldn't have mentioned that, I'm glad you brought that up, I have seen it is getting a lot easier, there has been a little bit of congestion still, I have known that a lot of our students that go to a devotion, some of them are getting put in that advisory to go to that devotion, so that's just been a bit of a mess, but otherwise, it is going kinda nice, students just check their advisory, see who their teacher is for that week and that day, just go right to that teacher, pretty self-explanatory. I know some students like it, some students just see it as a waste of time, the only thing that they still don't like about schedule is the lunch schedule, which we've talked about, there's not much we can do at this time or change, especially since we have to, um, abide to the elementary cafeteria, but advisory seems to be working well, and it should start to roll even smoother, so, it's about fifty-fifty, depends on the student's perspective.
They get into their teachers where they need to be, or?
They get where they need to be, most of them do, sometimes their teacher can pull it up for them if they don't have a computer on them, like if they're not in a room with a lab, and they can't check their homework at that moment, but otherwise, I believe students have been keeping up really well with it, which is a huge responsibility factor, and I'm happy to see that.
Alright, Colton, that was a lot.
We fell off.
You've done a lot of work putting all that together, so.
Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Thank you.
See you guys, thank you.
Elementary.
Elementary is first.
If you wanna go.
Oh, that's alright. You're up, Mr. Roger.
Alright, good evening, guys. Uh, I wanted to look at my screen, so I didn't get a hard copy on me tonight, but enrollment's pretty consistent, we did have some new, nine new enrollees there, our hundred percent attendance is down, of course, it's a bigger span than, than in August, in September, it's our first full month in. So, as Colton said, there's a lot going on in elementary, um, so I'll touch on a few things there. First of all, we had our bus safety, and as mentioned, that is a big thing there, and fire safety here, we had bus safety and fire safety, it's both a big thing in elementary, because a lot of your bus referrals come from elementary, um, so we try to go over that in elementary. Fire trucks been there, um, also is a big thing, it's not the same week, it's a different week, but kids love to participate in the fire trucks and getting spray the hose and things like that. Uh, we also had anti-bullying week, Mrs. Brower heads up all these, by the way, with the help of the classroom teachers, uh, getting this stuff out for kids is tremendous, it's great, we also have lessons on that, it's also, it's not just presentations, there are lessons. Uh, we had our first Rise and Shine on September 27th, and if those of you don't know, I think you probably all do, it's a elementary assembly, we all go to the elementary cafeteria, it's quite, it's quite a deal. Uh, yeah, September 27th, we pull in, all the, uh, not all the, but most of the teams that we can get to cut that can come and share some of their athletes, uh, coaches are involved, they do some of the athletes, they put on like a little presentation, the band came, uh, they, they, uh, played for us cheerleaders. In the elementary world, they love that, they look up to these kids, it's a big deal, 'cause they can't wait to get on the field, the court, the band, whatever it may be. So, we do that, that's our first big assembly of the year, uh, it, it's a good thing. And, uh, uh, one of the things, really, the meat and potatoes of, of everything, we had our win meetings, which a win meeting is, the win stands for what I need, that's for the classroom teachers, take their planned period, one whole day, all grade levels, and meet with me, Ms. Barker, um, Ms. Brower, and it's an opportunity to discuss students and student success, uh, go with reading success plans, and then their intervention plans, that's also a work in progress, and it always is a work in progress. We take those R-rated scores, the dyslexia screening scores, compose that data, and look and see what students need, need intervention, or they may test out of intervention, and try to comply with DESI, uh, DESI's policy, DESI's constantly making some changes, so we have to make changes to, to meet those, uh, changes, but we're still in the process of adjusting those, working on those, and it's, it's, the teachers, they were very beneficial, I believe, the teachers come with a lot of questions and concerns, again, ultimately, we're here for the kids, and that's what we're trying to do. Uh, upcoming events, we have our first positive bear assembly this week, uh, recognize those students and character traits, uh, in the first quarter, as you know, picture retakes, it's just things we've got coming up, we're working on those parent-teacher conferences, uh, in the elementary, again, that's, uh, some of our students do a student-led, uh, the undergrades, it is a little more of a challenge, so teachers come out there and do what they can do, and we're kind of flexible on that and things like that, so. Uh, we have a workshop coming up, I wanted to mention, that's called Reshaping Reading, they were sending six teachers to that, 'cause like I mentioned, uh, back in August, one of our big pushes, and it probably will be a push until we're satisfied with the progress is, is reading, we're focused on reading, and, uh, and, uh, so we've got some teachers going through that, and I'm, I'm excited about that, 'cause that's, that's what we're working toward, and, and, uh, we're doing a lot of good things with that, I'm very confident with what I'm seeing in the classroom, where teachers are working hard, trying to get new ideas, 'cause as, you know, things change, you know, and, uh, we're trying to find a way we can get kids to take an interest in reading. And another upcoming event that is, brings a packed house, if you haven't been to an elementary fall concert, put that on your agenda for November 7th, it is a packed house, so, and the kids do great with that, and then, um, and that's our first concert, so that's about it. Any questions? Alright.
Thank you, Chris.
You bet.
Who's up now?
I guess that's me, I just found out, so, John's not gonna make it, he's at cross-country, he said Coach Wagner's dragging things out, so. So, it was put on me, um, we had a map reward at Skate Land on September 27th, and that was a fun time, it was kinda old-school, getting them out on roller skates, and I think the kids had a really, really good time, kinda going back and doing that. Uh, on, this Friday, we're having the middle school 100-year celebration, so our middle school is 100 years old, uh, from the time the first students were in it. Coach Kali probably remembers that original opening day, so, uh. So, we'll be celebrating this Friday, um, we're gonna have alumni from the senior center come in during the school day, they're gonna get, at the school about 12:45, they're gonna be touring the building, while they're touring the building, I've got an activity for students, so they're gonna be able to get online, all of our, um, yearbooks are online through the public library, archived through there, so students are gonna have like some activities where they find some things each year throughout the building, just kinda some milestones, like the first time the school was mentioned in the yearbook, which is 1926, and the junior class had a write-up of how they moved into the new building two years prior, and that was the big thing, being able to do that, so they're gonna find some different things, there's gonna be some bonuses in there, to where they can find like a relative in a yearbook or something like that, so they're gonna be able to do that, and also, they're gonna have to get a story from one of the senior citizens coming through, from the senior center, and add that to their, to their deal. So, at the same time, we're gonna have some student leaders who are gonna be doing interviews of alumni, and we're gonna compile a video, from four to six, we're having an open house for anyone community-wise, I've already, I've already heard some, from some people out of town that are coming, planning to come and do that, and we're gonna, they're gonna be able to tour the building, and, uh, we're gonna have an opportunity for them to tell some stories when they were there, we're gonna do a, um, assembly that afternoon with the students, and put together a time capsule box, not one to be buried, but one that'll be kept in the building, just of things now and things that they wanna put for the next hundred years or till it falls down, so. So, anyway, you're welcome to come to that, we wanna invite everyone, even, you guys can come during the day, or for the evening one, it'll be before the football game, so it'll be done by that time. So, everybody's, uh, invited for that, we're gonna put together a video to kinda archive, to show and archive some of those stories and current stories and things, and I think, uh, Mrs. Lee's group is helping with the video process, so, a lot going on there, um, we've met with grade-level teams, oh, one thing, Mrs. Allison had a baby, so, we've got Mrs. Radcliffe in the office now, so, if you wanna come and give Ms. Radcliffe a hard time, we're having a good time with Ms. Radcliffe back in the middle school building, so, so if you wanna come and do that, um, we've been meeting with grade-level teams this week, of course, discussing, uh, our RTI process, and that's been going great, uh, we still making adjustments and fine-tuning that according to students that were, that, you know, needs that we, that we're seeing throughout the building. Also, uh, discussed our evidence-based grading, and just kinda, you know, touching base with that with, with our teacher groups, and, uh, that seems to be, you know, on the forefront of everybody's mind, but they're open, willing, and, uh, not really any pushback, everybody's like, yeah, let's do the planning and see what it looks like for us, so that's kind of our process right now, and so we're kinda moving through that together. Um, teacher evaluations, we've been working through those and getting in the classrooms, of course, we have amazing teachers, and so that's been, that's been great to be able to get in and see what the kids are doing, what the teachers are doing in the classrooms, and so, that's been, that's been awesome, and, uh, of course, Mrs. Schmidt with the CTE program, with the teacher to, uh, teacher training, I know my daughter, I think she's the only one in the program right now, doing that and taking those classes through Missouri State, and Mr. Schmidt is teaching those, but through that process, they've been getting into a lot of classrooms also, and so we've been getting some good feedback from, from them also through the observation process, so that's been great. Um, Mrs. Hopper has been doing our reading plans, and I think she's been, I know she's been in the elementary, they've been updating a lot of that off of data that they're receiving and doing updates on the individualized reading plans, and that's, that's been a good process. And, uh, Mrs. Henry this week, red ribbon week, she's been in the classrooms, uh, talking to kids about that and doing some projects, really neat projects, uh, tobacco and alcohol and drugs in the classrooms this week and going through those, so, some awareness things, so, that's everything that's going on in the middle school. Any questions?
Sounds good. Thank you, Chris.
Uh, it's been busy, we've had a lot of things going on. Brad Hudson, who, as long as he gets one vote in the November election, will be our new, I think, 33rd district state senator. new, I think, 33rd district state senator. He was on campus visiting one of our history classes on October 1st, and I got to sit in for a little bit of that. He was very good with the students and some of the students asked some questions, and he said, I'll have to research that. And so it was good to have him on campus. October 8th, we had Oscar Carter from DESI on campus checking out law enforcement, our criminal justice program, aviation. Talked about it a little bit, and then our carpentry program, and gave us some, some things that we need to check into, some possible resources that we can look at there. But feedback we got from him was positive on our programs. We have a lot of things in place. It's just building those programs, getting more students involved. Advisory has been good for that. We've been able to get kids that aren't familiar with those programs into those classrooms and seeing things that are going on. And I think we'll get some interest from there as kids are exposed to more of those things. ASVAB testing for the juniors was October 9th, homecoming. That was a busy week. And then we also had fire safety. The fire departments were out and teaching kids about fire extinguisher use and had a thing for them to practice using a fire extinguisher and talk about some other things that were fire-related. And I think that was, that was a good experience for our students, and we got pretty much every student through that in one day. Junior mock interviews will be coming up October 17th. If you aren't involved in that and you'd like to be, you can let Ms. Barry know, and she'd be glad to have you come do some interviews. Student-led conferences has been mentioned, October 23rd. PD Day coming up November 1st, junior job shadowing November 7th and 8th. And on November 6th, we have a, an assembly that's coming. We've got a lady coming to talk about and show a documentary on suicide. She had attempted suicide and did not, was not successful in that, and she tells her story and things like that. So that'll be coming November 6th for some of the middle school and the high school. Any questions on any of that? Okay, the last part, and this doesn't just apply to the high school, but I'm kind of the guy that gets to talk about it. And you have a paper there or a couple of papers there that say bare necessities. And so we talked about last year Portrait of a Graduate and developing one of those. But if you say Portrait of a Graduate, graduate typically means high school. And what is a Portrait of a Graduate and trying to explain exactly what that means isn't always easy for some people. So we've changed the name of what our Portrait of a Graduate is to Bare Necessities. And this was a process that we started last year. We started with some input from community and school people. We asked the different groups. We had stuff out at the CTE Open House where people could give some input. And then from there, we formed a committee that included board representation, student representation, representation from each of the buildings and representation from the community. And we met several times. And the goal is to find the characteristics or attributes that we want our graduates to have when they get done from the Willow Springs School system. That means prepay all the way through 12th grade. And so after several meetings and we came up with things and we revised things, the committee came up with what you see on that paper. Five main categories, and then on the one sheet, you'll see underneath those categories, some little bit more specific items. So the the main ones, those five are what should guide our instruction. Okay? So yes, we have our standards in each class that we have to meet from the state, and we're teaching those things. But through that, we want to achieve these things here. These attributes, we want our students to develop these attributes or characteristics by the time they graduate. And these are things that employers are going to look for, you know, that's going to make them an asset to the community, because that's our job here is to produce graduates that can contribute to the community. So this is not just something developed by us here at school. It's not developed by the high school, but a partnership through all the buildings, student input and community input. So we're presenting that here for you. And I don't know if they're approving that or at some point will approve that, but that's what we've come up with as these are the things that our students need to be able to do or need to display when they leave Willow Springs School District. Any questions on that?
So a couple of follow-ups for your questions. I'll probably ask you to approve this in November. That'll give you a chance to look at it a little bit more closely. This one is what will be seen the most. This is what will be out in the community in our school. The other is more for students and staff to get down to the details of what that looks like. And it's a, it's a living document, so it'll be, you know, once or twice a year, that group will kind of reconvene and make sure that these are still the things we want out of a, out of a graduate from Willow Springs. I appreciate Mr. Schmidt and the whole committee for continuing to meet and develop, develop these.
Any questions?
Thank you. There was a lot of work that went into that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and we're ready for
Here I am, Ms. Barker.
Elena?
Yep. All right, changes from last month. Special ed world is always very busy. Some key things that, the differences between this month and last month. Of course, we've had several more referrals from last month to this month. We're very, very busy in testing and processing referrals. We did participate in the win team meetings that Mr. Rogers kind of our role in those win team meetings is usually the first. We meet every quarter or more often if needed. What our role in those meetings are is we get kids on our radar, kids that they have concerns about or that they have questions if a kid has been evaluated before. Or if they've not, what steps do we take to get them through the process of getting a referral made if that's what the team feels is necessary? Sometimes it's, it's just a brainstorming session of what we need to do for a kid, and other times it's like this is the path you need to take in order for, and we have, we've had kids that were on our radar from last year's win team meetings that we started this year with, but we were ready to make referrals by the first win team meeting. So we're in the process of processing those. There were several that came out of that. Under goal four, one of the changes from last month to this month, our school district, and I was chosen as a representative, the Missouri schools for the severely disabled is going through a process of they went through an outside audit from an independent agency. And so what they're looking at globally is all of the state schools for the, for the entire state of Missouri is doing a better job with those. And so there is kind of a year-long process. The study's been going on for two years. But now we have a group of stakeholder meetings. Most of them are Zoom up until like February, and then we come together in person. But our district is represented in that where we're looking at, they're looking at consolidation of some state schools or making some kind of join together to better use resources. They've looked at items such as buildings that are leased versus purchased for the state, and was that the best use of state funds? So they're just kind of doing an overall audit, and we actually get input on what we feel like the outcome of what that should be. I think it's really important for, I'm glad that our district was selected because we have, we're sandwiched between the state school and that we have students attend West Plains, and there's also one at Mountain Grove. And so there are no other resources for severely disabled students in our area. And if they looked at consolidating or removing both of our options, what that might look like for our district, like would we have to in-house teach our severely disabled students? So being able to have a voice in that process was really important. And I'm, like I said, I'm glad that we get to do that. We won't know the outcome until sometime in the spring and what exactly they're going to do in that. But I said I had another point that I was going to make that was different from last month. I don't know if I mentioned last month that we made a change after kind of concerns from like whenever we've met with Dr. Spence and, and school staff members on what we could do better in the testing world on our end of things. And so we switched to kind of a foolproof administration of our cognitive assessments where they are done through a program called Q Interactive. There still has to be a trained examiner there, but it live scores the test where there's no like score and error possible, no human error possible in the administration or scoring of the assessment, because they're done virtually where the student actually picks from an iPad or electronic device the item that they want to choose for their answer, and it automatically scores things. So it takes the human error out of the process of IQ testing. The academic assessment is coming in that format, but it will be in January. So that's a change for, for us as well in the special ed world, just to take any human error possibility out of the testing process. Those were the biggest needs of everything for me. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I have one then for Mr. Schmidt. On the Chromebooks, can kids take them home at night?
They're not supposed to take them home. They will not work for them at home if they do take them. So they're supposed to be left at school.
All right, Sergey?
Dr. Yakovov.
Doctor.
Yes. Rarely can we say that in public. On his birthday.
All right, I'll let these guys take, take care of your Chromebook repairing needs. But I have a few words to say before they start and show you what they can do these days. This year is pretty exciting. We've got a cybersecurity class going on. We've got a seventh grade computer science class going on and programming class for high schoolers. And as challenging as those curriculums are, we find a little bit of time to help the school out with Chromebook repairs. And thanks to Andre, this is, what, third year, the Churn Tech Program, four, probably, you know, all four years of high school. Andre here is an expert in fixing Chromebooks for a number of years now. And he's been teaching, he presented to seventh graders on how to repair Chromebooks. I understand that soon he's going to be presenting to sixth graders even, just to give kind of basis and see if they can help us. And then he's taught all my cybersecurity skills and my computer science skills, how to do that. So we're going to try and continue to create some backlog of Chromebook repair. And it's been going really well. We've got pretty challenging curriculum, so we just find a little bit of time so far, but we're going to push some IT networking and IT repairs into those classes along with the regular curriculum. And this is where Andre comes in. This is also part of his senior project, and he's done an amazing job so far presenting to us. I know he's going to go to middle school and teach them everything they need to do with Mr. Ray's Mr. Ray's classes. And we're just going to show you some of the problems that we encounter with Chromebooks, and they will tell you about it. And then if you want to come in and join our class and get some more
Would you guys introduce yourselves?
Andre Buzinko.
Garrett Dickens.
Garrett's in my cybersecurity class, and Andre is in my cyber and programming.
So tonight, I'm going to show you a few problems that we encounter repairing Chromebooks. We've come up with the, with a little troubleshoot checklist. So the student goes through and makes sure the keyboard works. They check that off, and the webcam works, everything works. And if they do encounter an issue, they take note of it, and then it makes it easier to look at the problem and fix it real quickly. So the problem I will show you is, this is a screen right here, the broken screen. This is probably caused scratching, bending, or dropping.
Garrett can probably tell you some of the most common issues that we encounter with similar issues that we encounter with these Chromebooks is that some students end up carving out USB ports or the charging ports, or some of the batteries will be puffed up or no longer work or hold charge.
Did you say carving out?
Yeah, like stick something They'll stick something in there and carve out pieces of it where they no longer And of course, broken screens are the most common problems, a problem along with keyboards, missing keys over things that are not functioning. And that's, that's why we have a decent supply of old Chromebooks that we can, sometimes we can use the parts from, from old Chromebooks and replace those with the new models that teachers use this year. For example, we might encounter some issues where we might have to purchase some parts when we run out of broken ones to use for replacement. But so far with older generations, we're still doing okay on the parts.
Would it be easier, Andre, if they moved down?
Just stand over.
I'm not sure.
Is there something that they're going to do?
Let you guys.
You go right ahead.
Do you time yourself on this and have the
Not really.
Like, you see how fast you can do it?
The screen doesn't take much, probably like five, 10 minutes. The screen, the covering doesn't need any screws. You just pop it off. For the demonstration to go quicker tonight, I sort of scraped off the tape, there's sticky tape that holds down the the plastic. And there's just four screws that we unscrewed.
What does a new screen cost?
We have not really looked into purchasing them because we have for now a supply. And if we can avoid it, because paying, paying, we want enough buying used parts, and that's just
But you've got enough old ones to scavenge for it.
Some for now, yeah. And, and we're probably going to run out soon, but some forward, good.
These screens are usually standard on a bunch of generations, but with different models, usually it's the same. On the bottom, on the back, you just peel the sticker. You just pull it out. So the screen isn't really hard to
Yeah, even though everything seems so fragile, it's amazingly holding up even with our kids' use.
The reason we have so many spares, Mr. Johnson decided one day he was going to pull the batteries out of a whole bunch of them. And so that's, that's the reason why we have a bunch of spares.
Started a salvage yard.
Really? Cool.
No, we had some where the batteries were starting to bulge and they were going to blow up. So we didn't have enough to give it a whole nother lap, so we just pulled all the batteries out. So he and I had a day of taking Chromebooks apart and pulling batteries out and putting them back together. So
That may be an eventual concern is disposing of those.
Oh, I thought you were going to say those guys working on it.
So is there, is there a place you can send those batteries?
We'll have to probably look around Springfield area, probably the closest. Right now, we just had a few, but eventually to find us one.
You haven't had one catch on fire or?
No, and, you know, they wear gloves, and we try, I try to take care of the ones that are obviously dangerous.
Wait, we were supposed to wear gloves?
Well, this one we brought.
I don't have places, so
Oh, do you want to pop the keyboard?
I'll pop the keyboard off as well. I'll, I'll show quickly the underneath. This specific model has six screws, three on each side. And then two screws.
Are they in still? We thought we'd take them out for, to save some time here. But I guess there's one or two that come off too.
So how many broken Chromebooks do we have on a weekly basis?
We've, well, it's not that bad. We just haven't.
We've had some that have been sitting there for a while.
Okay.
From last year, so.
I think we've had two maybe? Really, that's it?
Less than a handful all year.
Right.
I talked to Ms. Hopper about that the other day, and it's literally like two or three. Keyboards and screens were like one of the two.
Whenever a kid in middle school, high school is using one, that's a pretty good ratio.
Andre, can you tell them about your training, how you learned this?
So I learned it when I was, when I took cybersecurity a few years ago. Andrew, I got to do some hands-on. I was taught by Andrew and by Isaac. And I've done a lot of them. It's just mostly hands-on. I haven't really watched.
Lots of YouTube, lots of Andrew, and lots of trial there.
Were you ever influenced by Facili? I just had to know.
So what's your goal from here? Are you planning on having a career in computer repair? Is that where you're headed?
Just in tech.
So you're currently working, or just during the summer?
I was working during the summer.
So he worked for who?
Coastal.
What's your senior project, Andre? I know that was mentioned, but what exactly?
So I'm doing kind of repair courses right now. Kind of trying a little bit of making maybe a little slideshow or something to have a bit of a little product after, maybe for like other kids to refer to later. And I've been just trying to get kind of like a teaching course, teaching lesson, to give middle schoolers and just teach them, so then.
Like teaching the middle school class and teaching the high school classes, that's part of it?
So something that we could go on and repair Chromebooks, or just?
I think the overall goal, not to step on it, but the overall goal is for all of our students to be able to repair and do basic maintenance on their own Chromebooks. Have a place, you know, a classroom or something where if their Chromebook breaks, they can go and they can do basic repair on their own.
So inside of Chromebook, there's two. Yeah, I come out, one for the touchpad and one for the, for the keyboard. Sometimes the keys break in a way where we can't put them back, so we just need to throw away the key or put a new one in from the spare parts. Sometimes if you're being really, just pulling these really quickly and not being careful, sometimes these ribbons break. But. So there's a battery, motherboard, and a little module. If we, this Chromebook has a problem with both of them. The little plastic and the little USB ports, the kids carve them out and break them. And so if we go to repair, if they break it on the left side, we need to replace just the little module. If they break it on the right side, we haven't really done any soldering, so the only thing we do is we throw away the entire motherboard and put a new one just for that little port.
Is it expensive?
I haven't, we haven't really encountered any, we haven't purchased any yet because we have a bunch of spare ones. The new generation, there's a G9, the newer Chromebooks. We haven't had much break, so we could put them in the parts bins or in the parts stack, so we haven't had much. So when we had broken G9s, we haven't had much parts to fix those with. So we would either have to give them another Chromebook or something. The screens, they're usually different. The motherboard, sometimes they're L-shaped, sometimes they're smaller, sometimes they're bigger motherboards. Batteries, they all vary in sizes. The screens, usually there's even Samsung Chromebooks and HP. I think they all fit similar, similarly. So the screens are not that hard to replace.
Andre, can I add some context to some of this? So when Facili left a while back, we actually hadn't repaired any Chromebooks besides Andre up until from that time Facili left, until Sergey started his class. Facili has been the main person repairing all these Chromebooks. And in terms of like money repair and all that, we've tried to buy models of Chromebooks that share similar parts. For instances, just like this, I mean, obviously some of it will change from generation to generation, but we do buy them. And so when we first started with Chromebooks back when Hutzel was here, we had to buy some parts, but we quickly got enough broken ones that we were able to just keep the parts moving. And so we really haven't bought parts for Chromebooks over the years a lot. One thing I will say, Chromebooks that stay at school last a lot longer and are in much better condition, the second they go home, that's where you have to start repairing a lot of stuff. So if we ever did switch a model like that, like COVID, whenever COVID was here, we were on a weird cycle where our Chromebooks were going end of life anyway, so half of them never came back from COVID. But they were end of life, so we really didn't, it didn't hurt us because they were going away anyway. But yeah, Chromebooks that go home are broken and they never come back. If they stay at school, they actually are taken pretty good care of. The carving of the USBs was really the only exception that we seem to have. The teachers here do a pretty good job of making sure the students treat them pretty well. So I just want to put some context around what we're dealing with.
Speaking of the inventory that we have as far as repairs, we, I just had my middle schoolers take most of them out and write down what they could tell right away what's wrong with them. We have probably about 40 to 50 in the pipeline that are in need of fixing. But some of them have minor issues that we can, you know. Last month I released seven or eight. This month I'll probably release another 10. So it's not a bad ad ratio. And the more time we can devote to that, the faster it will.
Great job. You guys have some questions for me?
Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Spare parts. So there's two screws, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm up next with some financial updates for you. First of all, I just wanted to show you the spreadsheet that I've been working on. This is an operating trajectory, and just kind of wanted to know, wanted you to know where things are heading. I'm going to send this out to the board later this week and give you a chance to look at it in more detail. And if you have questions for me, we'll go into some more specifics in November. So I don't want to spend a ton of time on it tonight, but I did want you to know it's there. And we'll look at that more in November. But it gives just some reoccurring expenditures all the way back to the 1920 year. We use, I use that as a baseline and then built off of that. You'll notice on some of the stuff coming up, I mean, the COVID and SIR bump is very real, and you'll notice that as you go through this. But revenues, expenditures, history, going back several years. You've got your fund balance, balance for Fund Four, and then projections out. This is the current budget, the orange column is. And then the green column will be projections for '25, '26. So look for that if you are overwhelmed with it and don't want to spend too much time on it. That's okay. But if you do have some questions, shoot them to me. And like I said, we'll go into a little more detail next month. I'm going to send it to you on email. I'll email it to you.
Well, that'd be pretty quick, because that's probably a lot to digest.
Yeah, later this week you'll get that. So I wanted to give you plenty of time to look at it before we dove into deep, so. There's that, look forward to getting that. And again, some of the, well, I'll kind of preface it when I send out the email. But the projections, obviously, were only, you know, through the fiscal, the fiscal year starts July 1, so we're several months into it, but a lot of the revenue hasn't come yet. So it's the projections and current are a little bit of a guessing game still at this point. Okay, the other stuff that we needed to get into with your budget update, unrestricted fund balance, and we talked about several of these things in the last few months, going back to the board retreat. Our goal is 20%. We're currently at 17%. So that is, one of my primary focuses this year is to get that back going in the right direction to 20%. To get that fund balance, of course, we have four funds. So this is really the funds one and two. This is the general fund and the teacher fund. So you divide the total of that by the ending totals for both funds, deduct your unrestricted balance from the ending balance. That's a lot of math. And when you see that sheet, you can see how, you can kind of piece that together. It's expenditures, it's revenues in those two funds. And basically, it's how much funding we have available to us that's not already designated for something else. This number will fluctuate depending on the monthly revenues and expenditures, but approximately right now, 1% would equal $150,000 in our $15 million budget. So if you're thinking, how do we get to that next percent? At least $150,000, and depending on fluctuating expenditures and revenues, it may be a little bit different. So historically, fund balances at Willow, it wasn't always a goal of 20%. From the decade of the 2000 to 2010, we ran a 10.8% average. And again, that fluctuates year to year, but that was our average unrestricted fund balance during that time period. We did better, 11 to 20. We were up to a 19.2% average, so getting very close to that goal. And then the last few years, so we hit the goal at FY '21 at 20.88%. Here's the COVID SIR spike, and it's very clear to see, 27.51%. So we were really flush with cash, but that was one-time SIR money that came through the budget, bumped everything up and made it look really good, and then went away. Dropped down to 19.85% in FY '23. So from FY '21, '23, it's important to know that salaries grew these years just about 1.5 million. So there is a large chunk that is not one-time money, that were good, healthy salary increases that we all love and wanted to do. But it does pay a toll. FY '24, which we are currently on the FY '25 budget. FY '24 is 17.23%. This was my first budget in the district. So clearly, dropping and going downward. So questions before I move on?
Part of it on the salary, we're trying to keep up with the state's push to.
Yes, definitely.
I mean, the salaries. But we're also, the state's pushing us to increase the salary and did it again this year as well.
Right, and that, you know, that SIR money was sitting there in the bank, and it made it look like, hey, we can do this. And we could, and we did, but there is some back pains on that that we need to pay attention to, and that's what we're attempting to do. So why is our balance lower? Why have we dropped into that 17 range? First, we've already talked about post-COVID salaries. You know, I've talked to several financial gurus in school finance, you know, and they looked back at our ASBRs and everything else and said, you know, you guys, like a lot of other districts, did several years' worth of salary increases in a two to three-year span. So that's going to catch up to us. Our DESI ADA payment, we were allowed to use the payment from 2020 up until last year, when we've seen that drop down to 17%. We're down over 100 enrollment from 2020. So we don't have as many kids, we're not getting paid as much on the ADA.
Does that translate to, excuse me, like around half a million on the 100 enrollment change?
Probably, I'll have to do the math for sure on that, but it's a big number, yeah. And again, through COVID, we were able to count our enrollment from 2020. So we didn't see that back when it was 27.5%. We really didn't see that, but the last two years, we've seen it. And then financial thresholds are another big one. Free and reduced lunch, this is a big one I didn't put up here, but our free and reduced lunch, the bigger that number is, the more incentives we can get from the state and the more money that generates as far as weighted ADA. Special education, enrollment was down significantly. That's about $385,000 in payments per year. So that is a big number, and we're going to get, and I'm talking with Marlena, and we'll talk more about that in November, because that's a pretty nuanced number. Clearly, we don't want numbers to go up just to get more money. That's not what we're about. But we do need to look a little closer at what's going on there and why we're not meeting that threshold. And those thresholds have changed this year, so we have potential to pick that threshold back up again. And again, that goes back to our ADA and gives us a bonus on top of what we would normally get per student on ADA.
What was the baseline from the $385,000 down in payment on special ed? Was that from last year, or is that from 20?
This is FY '24.
Okay, so from just last year to this year, we're down, okay.
Okay, so the most important question is what do we do about it? That's all past stuff. We really can't do anything about it, but what we can control is what we do in the future. So we didn't just, as you saw with the historical stuff, it didn't just happen. Okay, we slid into this, COVID, SIR had that spike. So it's going to take a couple of years to get back to where we need to be at that 20%, that 20% goal. Conservative daily operating budget, you know, that comes on my end. It comes on our administrators to just be more conservative and say no more often. If it's a need for the classroom, clearly we're going to do what's best for kids and continue to do that and make sure that our teachers have what they need to teach effectively. But some of the luxury type stuff, we'll have to say no to. State ADA has increased, that's good news for us. However, our enrollment is down. So my fear is that's going to kind of cancel each other out. Like, we're still going to continue to get kind of what we've been getting from last year after they stopped counting the 2020. But it could be that we could see a little bump from just an increased ADA. I'm talking with Tommy about what our bus situation looks like. Our fleet is in great shape. I don't want to hurt them too badly by skipping a year or multiple years with bus purchases. We're looking into lease options and what that would look like. Right now, it's about $120,000 per bus, and that's conservative. So I'll come back with more information on that, but that is a possibility that we're looking at. This one, we're definitely going to do. We've had our roof plan in place. The B building was going to cost this coming summer $219,000 to re-roof the B building. I've had our guys look at that, and they feel very confident that that does not need to happen right now. So we can postpone that a little bit if the board agrees with that, and that'll save us over $200,000 right there. So that's a good savings. We've got the CTE projects, the state line item for that at $500,000. That is meant to be spent for CTE renovations and all of our movement that's going on there. But those are projects that otherwise would have fallen into the main budget that we can keep out of the budget.
When does that come into play?
Right now, yeah, FY '25.
That's in play right?
Yes, in fact, we only have till July 1 of this year to spend it.
Okay.
That's part of our ongoing discussions with Josh and Mr. Smith. Building budgets, down 10%. Buildings don't have a huge budget, but that's just a part of all of us kind of tightening up a little bit and making sure that we're getting things back going in the right direction. This one's a big one, and obviously, we don't, we're not out to fire anybody or take away jobs from anybody, but we will look at positions once they become open. So if we have a teacher retire, or if they're moving to another position, we're going to look at that position and say, do we still have the enrollment numbers to justify that? Is there still a need for that for our kids? Again, we're not going to do anything that is, you know, the opposite of what we want to do for kids. We want to make sure that we're taking care of our teachers and our kids. But those positions, when they become open, we need to take a look at that because. because our enrollment's dropped 100 kids in the last four or five years. So that means the staff needs to look a little bit different probably. And then for the FY '26 budget, that's a ways off, but that's something that we'll start talking about coming up in, in February or March. Right now, I would, I would look at just a step movement with, with no real raise there on the base salary. Still allow teachers to move up like they would do on our salary schedule, but not adding anything to the base this year, which is what nobody wants to hear, me included. But that's kind of where we're at, where we're at to make sure that we get that going back in the right direction. So next update on this stuff will come in January. With a current fund balance percentage, we can get kind of where we're at currently with that unrestricted fund balance. And then, like I said, in November, we can talk about any questions you have with that spreadsheet that I'm going to share with you, and then we'll talk more specifics with, with Fed and kind of what that looks like. Questions?
Excuse me, pulling off the roof project, I mean, somewhere that's going to come in play.
Yeah.
Where, where do you see that at, I mean, on down the road, year, two years, three years?
I think three to five. I mean, it's, we, we don't have any leaks there, it's, it's in pretty good shape.
Was that the last one?
What's that?
Was that the last one on the?
Yes, yeah, that finishes us on, on the roof schedule. So we've got all of the main buildings done with brand-new roofs.
And we can put that out for bids whenever?
We can, yes.
We're not?
We're not tied anymore to the styles, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And we did not buy a new bus this year, is that correct?
We did this, this fiscal year, but we have not yet for, yeah, for next year.
And we didn't trade one in or we didn't sell it?
We sold it, yeah. Buses do not appreciate very well.
There's a lot of good info.
Yep. Any questions, if you're thinking about it this week, let me know, and we'll, we'll continue to work on it.
Marty, when you have something like that, is there no way to get that on our iPads that we'll have?
Like the presentation?
Yeah, that, and then just like that spreadsheet you're talking about, is there no way that can just be sent to our, our board?
Yes, we can definitely get that.
Can you handle that, Andrew?
Both of those things can get on it, right?
Could you send us a PDF?
Yeah, anytime you have something like that, and we're still about to look at this, I think that's invaluable to go back and be able to see.
Yeah, okay, yeah. We'll get both of those things on your iPad first thing tomorrow, right, Andrew?
Thank you, Andrew.
May need to get Andre back here to do it. Okay.
It is good.
That's a lot of good stuff. Thanks for the snapshot.
I'll figure it out. I don't know what you'll get, but I'll figure it out soon.
Okay, let me get back to my, oh, and one other financial note that I wanted to mention. Amendment two, not to get too political in a board meeting, but, okay, amendment two is the sports betting amendment. And definitely vote your conscience on that, but I did want to pass along what I have been told by other school leaders. What happened, Andrew?
Wire problem on. Plug it from the Mac.
Just unplug it. So they're selling that amendment two is going to be a, a big help to public schools. We're not going to see, it'll be very, very little if we see any of that money. It's one of those things where it's going to be put in the top and taken out the bottom, kind of like the lottery. So again, vote your conscience, but know that if, if that's your reason for voting yes on it to help public schools, that's not really going to be a, a big help to public schools. So I just feel compelled to, to make sure you know that before you go to the ballot box. Okay.
So we're taking bets though on how much money will this?
The president? Yes.
No. Yep, I think it'll be just like the lottery.
Yeah.
But anyway.
All right, next up, we have a CTE update. This is from Mr. Owens, but I'll be taking care of that for him tonight, but he's provided me all of this information. So the bullet points are on the screen, and I'll read what he's got written down for you. The beginning of the new school year always brings a lot of excitement and some new challenges. Some of the notable changes at high school level have been adjusting, you guys have heard about this, the bell schedule and class time, going one-to-one with Chromebooks, adding an advisory period, and increased technology and facility security measures to protect staff and students. All these changes are for the good. It does take a group effort to work through that adjustment period, and the CTE department has been no exception. It's been in a constant state of renovation and movement since May of '23, and you guys have been on top of all of that. By third quarter of last year, all of the programs located in Innovation Hall were operational in their new locations, and the renovation to that building was complete for the remainder of the '23, '24 school year, so last year, the summer, and in the beginning of this year, the focus has turned to Opportunity Hall, which is the one closer to the Highway Patrol. Our goal was to have the ag classrooms and all the attached areas finished by the beginning of school and complete the shop portion roughly around the end of first semester. Unfortunately, we've had some setbacks with our flooring material in the classrooms that led to a very untimely delay right before school started. Flooring in that building has been a bit of a, been a bit of a challenge. Moda was really good at putting carpet down and make it very hard to get it off. We're able to get our ag classrooms and bathrooms operational by the start of school, but there's still some finishing details that will need to be addressed. Progress in the shop portion of the ag building continues. Installation of garage doors should be finished this week. After they're installed, we can begin focusing on the metal lining. And then once that's in place, the electrical services and air lines can be run. Goals to have students using the new shop by early second semester, so maybe February, somewhere in that range. With the help of Mr. Seiler's carpentry, intro carpentry students demolition has started in Mrs. Ryan's new fax location. Mrs. Ryan's new location will be in the lower level of Opportunity Hall, directly under the new ag classroom. So I'll show you some pictures that Mr. Owens sent along. This is Mr. Walden's classroom, which has my vote for best classroom on campus, because his views out that window, it looks over towards City Hall. It's just a really nice, nice view, nice classroom for Mr. Walden. This is Mr. Talbert's classroom. It's a little more bold with the, with the wall color there, but again, in the flooring, it's an epoxy that, that they wanted, that FFA blue, and it shines. They spent a lot of time, a lot of work on that. So this is underneath the fax area, or the FFA area. This will be the fax area for Mrs. Ryan and her fax students. She's had a lot of help from two advisors in our local area, Mrs. Jim Lee James and Mrs. Pinky Gum, who have, they've had lots and lots of feedback for Mrs. Ryan. Very knowledgeable, and they've got a lot of expertise, and this is kind of how that's going to look. They'll come in, they'll come down the stairs through here. This will be your classroom area. This is the kitchen area. You see, you've got four different stove tops there. I think maybe this is refrigeration over here. Her desk will be over here, and then they've got some storage back here, a place to, for their T-shirt printing and some of the projects that they do. But that's going to be a really, really nice space. And we will, our, our ag students and our fax students will have two of the best facilities in the area, no doubt, and I would say probably in the state. So it's just a really, a really good thing. And we're going to talk later about you guys touring the campus, and we'll, we'll definitely hit both those buildings.
Josh is pretty attentive to detail, so he doesn't hold a candle to, to advisors. Have you been advised before, Matt? I, I've, I've heard a lot about this.
I went on working thing, talked to him at length the other day, and he's got so much stuff going on, and,
Yes, it's,
he's right on top of it.
Yes, he is, he is. Just a few more things from Josh, some fine tuning of the new programs. We talked about that at our retreat, how enrollment numbers were not really where we hoped they would be. He wanted to address that. So some different options to improve numbers of enrollment in those new programs. After talking with students, evaluating our current seated time, the timeframe in our schedule that some of our CTE programs occupy, I think we can make some adjustments to remove some of the scheduling conflicts for our students. So all that to say, sometimes there's a schedule, there's just scheduling conflicts, and they may want to take the class, but they can't because they have core class or something else that gets in the way. So I know high school's been working on trying to alleviate those, those problems and getting those kids in there. And then the other aspect of that is more exposure. Mr. Owen says by adding an advisory period this year, where teachers schedule different students into their classroom, they've been exposed to some programs they normally would not have been, and Mr. Schmidt mentioned this earlier. It's led to a lot of increased interest in new programs. Mr. Seiler's also started an intro into carpentry program this year that covers general shop and tool safety, and then steps students into a more of a carpentry environment. We've seen multiple students requesting schedule changes to transfer into carpentry from this program. And they also got the Bear Media team working on some promotional videos that'll be played for the student body. So we're doing some good stuff there to try to get some more interest generated in those programs. Mr. Schmidt also mentioned that Dr. Carter from DESI was here to look at our CTE programs. Was that last week?
Yes.
Yes. Carpentry and criminal justice both fall under skilled and technical science, and the purpose of his visit was to evaluate our program, our instructors, and offer some feedback. He was very impressed with our staff and facilities, felt that our ideas to help with student enrollment would be effective. Summarize, he said, our program's had all of the right ingredients, just need to fine tune the scheduling. So it's encouraging to hear from somebody that was, had some expertise in this area, that we were doing the right things to increase enrollment in those programs. And then Mr. Owens had one final thought, wants to acknowledge how great our CTE teachers have been. And I would echo that, I'm sure Mr. Schmidt would as well. To work through the growth process, adding programs, upgrading things that we're already doing, it's been stressful at times getting everything relocated, but our teachers have shown some incredible patience, and they take a lot of pride in what we've got going on over there. And I'm anxious for you guys to, to come look at that later this month. Okay, that's it.
And also want to mention the amount of work that has gone into putting those buildings together. Josh and then our two ag teachers have put in tremendous number of hours.
Yeah, you know, you saw those pictures, and that, we didn't hire anybody to come in and do that. That was, that was our teachers and our students just getting in there and doing it themselves, saving the district thousands of dollars. And then they, you know, take a lot of pride in it, and it's,
As they should.
It's, yeah, it's a, it's a cool thing, and Josh has been phenomenal getting that off the ground and, and doing all he's done. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good.
School safety. Get up.
Been busy in our apartment lately. So I'll just hit on a few points here, stuff that we're doing just around the campus. Remote access, so we had the, the safety grant, I think from last year, that we kind of updated all the camera systems with and updated multiple things across the, the district with that. But we kind of, we, we chose a brand unify, so we're kind of going with that with our remote access. So remote access is going to be like a, like a key card system. This will access like all the exterior doors, or most of the exterior doors around the campus. And that's kind of, and, and help from, a little bit from Marlena here and, and all that. So we're looking at, that's going to be an awesome way to distribute, you know, key cards, limiting access, if somebody needs to use a facility, that key card could only be for, you know, a certain amount of time, say, something like the bear stand or something like that, you know, that, that key, that key card would be available for just a certain amount of time or, you know, so there's, there's a lot of good things that we can use with that, and it syncs with our camera system. So it's all working as one, one program, one system. In fact, this little key fob here, this will get you into like the, the high school and middle school, and we're starting to get to the elementary now, just the main doors for now. It's quite a process. We have to add hardware to each of those doors that electronically opens those doors. So it's not just a, put a remote access on the door and it just, it works just fine. There's a lot of work that goes into it, and you have to have outside sources for that to come in. And so we're still working through that. A lot of that is from this original safety grant that, that we had. I don't know that we have all those installed yet, do we?
No, not yet.
Yeah, so it's, it's a process, and it takes a long time for them to put them in. So, so that's some really good stuff. Fencing stuff, I, I kind of wanted to touch on this. I'm, I'm sure everybody's, you know, seen the fencing project, and I, I just, I want to note a couple of things from that. Morning time and afternoon, when we, when we release children, students, it's wild, and it was wild up in there, especially around the, the High Street Ferguson area, it was crazy. You know, you've got kids running across the road, getting dismissed, parents coming through, picking them up, got buses dismissing. Since we've done this, and I know Dr. Johnson could, could echo this, 100%, like, so much calmer, so much better. This used to look like Times Square now, it's like, it's like a desert out there. I don't want to make that seem like a bad thing, but it gives our, especially our high school students a much better way to get to school. They're parking in the student parking lot, they're walking up the hill, which that, that part of the road is now blocked off. There's no traffic coming up and down. There's, they just have a clear, safe path to get to school. You know, we don't want it to seem like it's, it's a big fence that cages everybody in, but it does really cut down on the, on the possibility of someone getting, getting hit by a vehicle there. So it's been like, in my opinion, and several of us that worked there, a tremendous update for our facility, just to keep our students safe. So, and I will touch on one other thing. It's really cut down throughout the day. I know last year, we, we dealt with this a lot, of just unwanted people coming through the campus throughout the day. It was just a constant. It was at least one, two, three a week where I would get, get a call on the radio saying, hey, there's somebody walking down through here, and they've got kids playing out there. It's our middle school playground. That's cut down on that tremendously. Like, we, I don't know that I've even received a, a call for that this year. So that's huge, that's, that's really good. You know, we want to, you know, keep our, keep our kids separated from everything outside of school, and I think that's done a pretty good job so far. The next thing, so before, before school got kicked off, we, we did a reunification drill at First General Baptist. Let me tell you, I've done a lot of trainings and tried to, tried to organize a lot of trainings. This is the absolute, one of the absolute toughest, I shouldn't say it's the, but it's, it's definitely a real tough thing to train. There are so many moving parts. So Officer Moore was there, and that's kind of like his bread and butter there. He does a lot of that stuff. So we had all staff attend that day, I think it was on the 8th of August. It all went really well. We were able to separate everybody about half and half. One half went to do the reunification, and the other half would do a little bit of medical and radio training, which is huge. We have radios in each classroom, so gets the teachers, new teachers especially familiar with using the radio. And we had Logan White come in, and he did a stop the bleed presentation for everybody. So kind of get them all trained back up on, on, you know, medical, on the medical side of that. So really good drill, really hard. We went through and we videoed all that, so we're hoping that we can use that training aid in the future. It's just so hard to get 175 people, 200 people in one place all the time to do that kind of training. So really good stuff from that, heard a lot of good stuff from that. Couple of the things, so right now, we have Raptor. It's, it's our communications, you know, if something goes south, we can, we can hit that, use the Raptor app, and it'll notify everybody across the district or all the teachers. So recently, we were able to pick up a visitor management system. So we're still working. Andrew and I are still trying to figure out kind of how to put that in across the district, but basically, we can scan driver's license and check for offenders, registered offenders that are coming onto the, onto the property. And, you know, say if they're visiting and for whatever reason, we can check that. We can also give them a badge that will be printed off. And I think the guys that went to, was it Milwaukee?
Wisconsin.
Oh, Wisconsin, yeah. So they, they had something very similar at that school. So basically, it's just a little sticky visitor badge, and they'll have their picture on it, time that checked in, time to check out. So really good for our, our district. We're just trying to figure out what's the best way to put that in each building, or if we just do it in one, one location. So we're still working on that. So the last thing, and obviously, this is the big hot topic here lately, of all the, all the school threats that have been coming through. And so, you know, we've, we're going to do a safety forum tomorrow. It's at Crossways, we invite everybody to come, a Q and A session there. We can discuss, you know, the, the topics, the trends. Everybody is going through this, you know, everybody's going through this. It's not just us. There has been a lot of fallout from that, so I think as school districts across the nation, we're still trying to figure out how to handle this in the best way. You know, we, in our eyes, we just want to let everybody know that if you see something, there's a couple of different ways of reporting that. Courage to Report is one great place to record that at. And then, you know, obviously, if they have, you know, a contact through the school, we want to know that, but also, this is kind of something Officer Moore kind of come up with, is reporting that and not reposting that. We definitely, you know, and reposting a thread that could come through could be considered and looked at as a crime. So, we want to make sure that we educate our students and parents to just report that and not actually send that back out as a, as a social media repost. So, big deal, but if everybody would, you know, if everybody wants to come and watch or come be a part of the Q&amp;A, that'd be great, we'll discuss all those topics a little bit more in depth. So, anybody have any, any questions?
I just have one. What about the new drop-off and stuff that you guys kind of created? How's that?
Yeah, so, just talking with everybody, I mean, it's, it's maybe added a couple of minutes, but it's putting everybody on one side of the campus. I've not heard anything out of the ordinary with it here lately. Typically, the drop-off and pickup, or I guess the pickup period, about 3:25, they're done, and everybody's kind of out the door, so about that time. So, the drop-off in the morning is smooth. There's no wait, you can just drop off and go on.
Everybody knows which way to go now.
Absolutely. I think we're kind of getting that, getting everybody trained through there, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. On the remote access there, and maybe you can't answer this, I don't know, but if there's a power outage?
Yeah.
How do the doors work? I mean, do they still work?
We would still have keys that would still access the doors, but that would probably put us down temporarily, and these are, you know, gonna, they work off of internet, so we have to have the internet going. Andrew might be able to go a little bit more, but end up with that, but you'd probably have to have some sort of large battery backup in order to keep it functioning.
So, these doors, actually, we're not going with MagWox, we're going with Panic, so they fail secure, meaning that when there's no power, it's as though the access control wasn't there. The door still functions, I mean, the control?
You can get out of the building.
Oh, yeah, it still opens up, and it also locks. Like, the locking component is without the access control. All the access control adds is it pulls in that panic, so if it's out without power, you just don't have the cool feature that unlocks it.
Oh, and the drop-off's awesome. I think it works great.
Okay.
Thank you.
We appreciate Jeff and Glenn and Jerry, and again, they'll all be there tomorrow night for the forum. Certainly encourage all you guys to come. I know we've got a couple of SCA admin that are going to be there as well, that we're certainly not alone in working through this, so proud of our guys for being on the forefront of it and offering to share that with everybody else.
Thank you.
Okay, you have the drug testing policy, JFCI, on your iPad. Basically, we changed to a swab, a mouth swab instead of urine recently, and we were, our athletic director was going back looking at that drug testing policy, and it says specifically urine, so that we need to change that and take the, just basically take urine out of it and just say we will be drug testing and leave it at that. So, I would propose that we make that change to the policy to have it fit what we are actually doing at the high school.
So, is this the old policy or the?
That is the old policy.
The old policy.
Yeah. And we would just take urine out of the policy.
Just like general?
Yes, yeah. Because it's, and we didn't, you know, one of those things that slipped through the cracks, we didn't realize it was so specific to just that.
And the same thing with the administrative procedure?
Yes, yeah. Fairly simple fix there, but don't want the board to be aware of that.
Do you do randoms?
Yes. Yeah. For all, for athletics and, yeah, I guess.
Teachers?
No. Only if there's suspicion.
I know if there was suspicion.
Yeah, no. Bus drivers, we do, yeah.
But you also have a reasonable suspicion part of this, too, right?
Yes.
And that's not random, obviously.
Right. Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, the last thing I have for you is some campus tour dates. This really came from the admin team, that they've been doing some climate and culture walks to other buildings, and thought it'd be a good idea, really for you guys to get on campus and kind of take a peek behind the curtain and see what goes on on a day-to-day basis. I promise you, it won't be too labor-intensive, but those are, those are dates that are good on campus for you guys to come down.
What's your last date?
What's my last?
November 1st.
You know, yeah.
In November, that'd be a P D day.
Yes, it would. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. So, we're not going to worry about that date right now.
I can do either.
And we don't have to decide this tonight, but if you have one of those two dates that work for you, let me know, and we'll get you on the schedule. No more than three on a date, that way we can talk about school stuff.
Forum?
Right, without being a forum.
I can do 28, but not 22.
I'm not, that's good.
Okay, so 28, they got Hobson and Webb?
Yeah.
I need 22.
I can do 22. We do it in the morning?
I like to.
We can do it whenever you guys want.
I can do 22 as well. I can do either, so put me wherever.
Okay.
Put me on whichever one you want.
All right, so. We got it, Jeff, both on the 22nd.
That's a week from tomorrow.
Yeah.
Hold me out.
Coach, you might need to put in for vacation.
I'll turn it early in the morning, man. Early in the morning, you do it for me.
I like it, we'll get it.
Okay.
And if you need it to, you can do a morning session and afternoon, because you can't get seven in and just two sessions.
You're right. Let's do Debbie, Scott, and Jeff on the 22nd.
What time?
What time is good for you guys? Morning, did you say?
Yeah.
Like nine? Oh, are you want eight?
Eight-thirty or eight?
I'm good. Earlier the better.
You're the boss, man. Just tell us.
Let's go eight-thirty. That gives me a chance to have some coffee.
I can do any time, 28.
Yes, the 28 and Mac, I'll just get you at some point.
Paul is wandering around.
Mac will be wandering around.
Wander around myself.
What time did you say?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
On the 22nd.
Yes, and my 28 team, when do you guys want to go?
8:30.
Eight-thirty? Okay, eight-thirty.
Check out first, I'll shake your arm.
All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, send a message over cross. Yeah, I'll get you. Have you heard?
That's all I've got. Mandy's got a special comment from a guest, though, I think.
You do.
I think you do.
I'm not presenting that. Okay.
Yeah.
You talk about it.
In the consent agenda items, we did miss a letter of resignation. One of our maintenance staff has sent in his letter of resignation, and we need to make sure that you have seen that.
Is that on filter?
And approve that resignation.
It's the original one, I guess, when he started.
Mike isn't original, and he's leaving as an original as well.
All right.
We will, we're very, very sad to see Mike Bailey retiring. He's, we'll give him some more prop later on, but that's his official letter. We couldn't fit that on the iPad.
All right, now, items for action, we need to?
Be the policy, don't we?
Approve that policy.
Yeah.
Right.
That's the only item I have.
Okay, so, motion being ordered to approve policy, the revision to the policy JFCI as presented.
So, sit.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.